Yeah, I think we've worked.
These slides.
So, this is perfect. I mean, I'll act like I'm not reading yet. Okay.
He's got some videos.
Larry said there were some slides?
They're gonna give it to him.
They got a video too on 503.
And I see it.
I saw it today. I saw it today. Doesn't show much though because they don't have a lot.
So, do you know who's bringing the slides or video?
Well, Larry, Larry just mentioned they're gonna bring it down.
Oh, okay, okay. I will review it tonight and tomorrow, and I'll give you a call tomorrow if anything worries me. Alright, thank you.
Oh, did I hear that? Did I hear that?
Okay.
It's been there the whole time.
I just saw it there now.
Wow, that's pretty good.
Hi Jeff.
Yeah, how are you?
Oh, looking after the preacher. Thank you.
Gloria, did your artist? Gloria, am I supposed to check my pass up now?
Hi Lisa.
Okay guys, I thought you guys were waiting on us. It's after six.
They're spreading, they're spreading our...
Do we all have a stack of them? Ah, okay.
Hey ladies.
Oh yeah, I'll probably do that. He's better at that than us.
Oh really?
That was really good. First I'm gonna go.
I know.
But that's how it is.
Is that yours?
Yeah, they pass out a couple of these. Did you get one of these?
Well, I got a little bit. Oop, 601.
Sorry, we were up here talking. We'll call the meeting to order. This is our planning session for tonight, City Council. And Mr. Raines, you wanna kick this off?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. We have two items that we're going to speak to the council regarding this evening. The first is the presentation and discussion on the counties preserving our future campaign, which is really focused on our transportation improvement and maintenance program. And tonight, we've got Celeste from Pinal County, who will be providing the mayor and council with an overview of the presentation and entertaining any questions. So I'll hand the microphone to her.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Celeste Garza. I'm the Deputy Public Works Director for Pinal County. I'm here to provide you an update on our Transportation Maintenance and Improvement Fund update, which is also known as our Preserving Pinal Campaign. So, how is road maintenance funded in Pinal County? We have three different sources of revenue. The first is our VLT, which is our vehicle license tax. This is what you pay when you pay for your car registration. Next is our Highway User Revenue Funds. So these are the funds that are collected from the gasoline tax and was last increased in 1991. I'm gonna come back to that in a little bit. And then our third source of revenue is our half-cent excise tax. So that's the fund we're talking about today. We do not currently use property tax sourced from county residents to maintain roads in the county. A brief history. So our half-cent excise tax has been in place for nearly 40 years now. So, most of my adult life, I've been paying for this and several residents have too. It was originally passed in 1986. This was just a few years after Prop 400 was passed in Maricopa County to source for the interstate system. So that's what paid for your loop system that's over, that you travel in the metro area. At that time, Pinal County was only a population of about 100,000. So, we've increased significantly. It sunsetted in 2006 and was renewed in 2005 by voters. And at that time, the population of the county was about 255,000. So this 20-year span will then sunset in 2026. And just, it's important to mention that this is a renewal of an existing fund that's in place. This has nothing to do with the Prop 417 or 469, which is our Regional Transportation Authority. The Maintenance and Improvement Fund is a, you know, maintains, preserves, and repairs our roadways. It is, you know, sourced between 10 different municipalities that are located in the state. So there's a portion that goes to the county and then portions that are divvied out by population to the cities and towns. The distribution of this revenue is populations-based. So it's a formula that's developed through the Arizona Department of Revenue and then locally distributed amongst the cities and towns. So the fund is used for a variety of purposes. For road repair, road widening, traffic safety, pothole repair, preservation, new road construction, intersection improvements, and highlighted in red, I have the road payment preservation, which is how the city here uses most of their revenue for preserving existing infrastructure. So the fund's goals. Some of our other fund goals outside of those is just improving public safety. So safer intersections as well as connecting streets to reduce emergency response time. Managing growth. You know, we have grown exponentially in population. So we're trying to find ways, creative ways to source infrastructure. Protecting taxpayers. So preserving our roads avoids complete rebuilds, saves taxpayers money. Air quality. We're under some PM10 mitigation for dust pollutants. So we use, also source the funding for that effort. This is a bar graph which shows how the revenue is dispersed amongst the cities and towns. In the last fiscal year, the revenue was generated about 36 million, which averaged about $3.1 million monthly to the fund. So far, in the fiscal year we're in, it's collected about 19 million, which is in the same ballpark of about 3 million a month. The city itself receives about 416,000 monthly for the revenue. This fiscal year, it's about 2.9 million. This is another pie chart that shows the percentage of distribution. So the county in population today is a little under half a million. Half of those residents live in unincorporated Pinal County. And then the other half of the pie chart are the cities and towns in which they live. 13% of that is Casa Grande residents. Road maintenance funds facts. So these are specific to the city's pavement preservation program. There's been several lane miles that have been improved over the course of the last 20 years in overlays. Pavement marking. So this is your striping, re-striping, crack sealing. There's been a significant amount of crack sealing that's been done. And this is a map that's showing how the county has used some of their excise tax for work in and around the District 3 area. So in the hatched area are the City of Casa Grande city limits. The green area is showing District 3, which is under Supervisor Miller. And then there's just several things that we've done over the last 20 years, kind of in and adjacent and around the City of Casa Grande. I'm gonna turn things over to Kevin Lewis, your Public Works Director, to provide you some specifics of how the city's used some funding over the years.
Thank you, Celeste. Yeah, so I did wanna go over some of the highlighted projects that we've accomplished over the years. This is not an all-inclusive list. This is just highlights of some of those projects. But this fund really does make our pavement preservation program possible. That's a lot of Ps. Okay, I won't say that one again. Probably the most notable of recent was our Florence Boulevard Mill and Overlay Project. Had an impact on a lot of residents, both positively and negatively. Negatively during the construction and then positively, you know, looking at the pavement condition now. And then I've got some slides in here that we'll go over. This was our downtown street reconstruction project, Phase 1, that we did in 2007. And these are just some photos of the project, both during and after the project. You can see in the lower right-hand corner, the roundabout at the end of Jimmy Kerr, where it intersects with Main Street and Second Street. And then some of the construction while it was in process there. Another project, a little longer ago, a little while longer ago, was the Trickle Cottonwood and Casa Grande Avenue Mill and Overlay. It was a thin mill and overlay of those major arterials. Again, you know, during the projects, we impact the motoring public negatively. But, you know, we've got a great road out there with a good pavement condition. All preventative maintenance of the existing structure so that hopefully we can forego having to reconstruct, a total reconstruct, which costs a lot more money than the preservation that we do with these types of projects. And then we, about three years ago, we did the reconstruction of the, or actually, last year was the reconstruction of Western Manor subdivision, out just adjacent to our industrial area. The roads needed to be reconstructed and we got that project done. This is a photo of our Rancho Grande construction. And that was one where we had to go in and restabilize the subgrade before we put the new pavement back down. Great process that we've used on several different projects around the city. Rancho Grande, probably the largest of those projects of late. And then this is some photos of us doing the chip seal. This one was actually, I think, this one is early road between Hacienda, the I-10 overpass, and Pierrot Road. So that was the double chip seal we did. And I've checked a couple boxes off. Of course, Celeste mentioned we're in a PM10 non-attainment area. So we have to do what we can to try and mitigate some of the dust impacts from our roadways. And this was one that checked that box off, as well as giving the motoring public a back route around Florence Boulevard if they choose to go that way. Our Phase 2 of the downtown street reconstruction project effort really had a facelift for that downtown. Hopefully, we'll have Phase 3 coming here in the future. Of course, this tax would be integral to that type of a project moving forward. Another example was out in the VIP Boulevard area in our industrial area. We did a Cape Seal project. That's where we put down a rubberized chip seal to help stabilize the top of that roadway surface. And then we put a slurry seal on top of that, hence the Cape Seal. Great pavement preservation effort to hopefully give that road quite a few additional years before we need to do anything major to it. And this is an in-house project we did on First Street in our downtown area. Of course, the funds that this tax produces helped us pay for the asphalt and materials that we needed for that project. And our annual crack seal program, that's typically what we do up in front of our pavement maintenance. So the surface treatments that we're gonna be doing, we do the crack sealing first and then we come back in and do the surface treatments. And those are chip seals, slurry seals, microseals, different types of surfacing projects. Was this one yours?
So like I mentioned, the population of Pinal County today is a little under half a million residents. The funding source is set to sunset in 2026. In the, over the last, last summer and the winter timeframe, we were working with a consultant, High Ground, who's helping us with our marketing campaign to preserve our future, public awareness. We're at the point where we are providing information to our cities and towns. And in April and May, we're gonna be out at open houses and public meetings for the public to be, to attend. Our public house, open house is set for April 10th. So we'll be at the Casa Grande Rec Center on April 10th at 4:30. That's, everyone from the public can come in and hear about, hear this presentation, ask any questions they may want to about the fund. And then we'll be starting potential voter pamphlets around the June timeframe, if we gain support from all the cities and towns to move forward. And then this would be on the ballot on November 5th. So, what happens if the road maintenance tax expires? So we're currently receiving about 36 million annually in revenue. If there isn't enough to maintain our roadways, we'll have to find creative ways to source transportation. Or we're severely impacted with roads that look like this. This is the old US 60. So when the US 60 you drive today was installed, ADOT then handed the old road back to us. And this is one of our failing pieces of infrastructure that doesn't see a lot of traffic, but it's fell low on the priority list of preservation. So that's, that's kind of the piece of the puzzle where I'm not sure where we'll be if it does expire. I recently took my daughter to get her instructional permit on Friday. And I'm gonna do everything I can to preserve her future, her safety, her transportation, as well as, you know, our future growth and them traveling the roadways that we have. So I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, anyone? Lisa?
Just a comment. Thank you for the presentation. But Celeste, how can we as a city, and you're probably already working with staff to make sure that we're getting the messaging out there? Because as we know, in November, there's so much on the ballot. And so how can we as a city help educate, you know, our citizens besides what you're doing? Are you asking cities to help along and help?
You know, anything you can do to advertise an open house meeting. I don't know if you have local chamber meetings, local public meetings that the city has. If you can do anything to post that on your social media, that would be very helpful to get the word out. The big thing that we're trying to communicate to residents is that this is very different from what they've seen on the ballot in the past. This is much a renewal as it is, nothing new to them. Nothing's gonna change for them, really. So that's, that's kind of the message that we're trying to send.
Celeste, one of the things that I had asked the county for was, because I've been working with them on this for a while. And I think it'd be most impactful if, you know, that list of projects, Kevin, that you kind of went through, is if there were, if there were real dollars attached to it. So me as a citizen, I know that, you know, this road cost us, you know, $5 million or whatever it was. So there's real money attached to it, not just, oh yeah, I remember Florence Boulevard getting, you know, a Mill and Phil. Well, how much was that? How much, how much did we spend on that? And so they see that there's real dollars in it. Because I know you've got 36 million collected, but there's no real number on what we did with it, right? I mean, there was projects, but the dollars aren't attached to the project. And I think that would be more impactful for our citizens.
Sure, sure. We can certainly put together for the April 10th meeting some of that information in a pamphlet form so that they can...
Yeah, or even, and I had suggested the county that they put together this kind of a presentation, but maybe in a, right? And so it's sweet and short, but then send that to us and let us customize for our community, right? So those projects that Kevin had listed and he went through are in this, right? So we customize it for Casa Grande. So when I'm talking to my citizens, I'm talking directly to them and the impact it had on their, on their neighborhood, right? So, or on their road that they travel all the time. And I think that, you know, we can certainly help spread that word. And that's kind of what I've told the county also. So, before we get to May, before we get too far along, you know, I think that, you know, all of us are Rotary members or, you know, we're part of Boys and Girls Club or the Chamber or whatever all the boards are that we are on, our Faith Alliance groups. I mean, all of these groups have, have a voice in the community. And we can get that word out there. So anything you can do, any tools you can give us, we will use, so.
Absolutely. We'll get those to you.
Matt?
Also, it's a great idea, Mayor, because people wanna see in our community what is coming back. And also, I mean, even in District 3, because like, I was just looking at Thornton Road and that affects us a lot, even though it's technically not in the city, but it goes right up to the city. Yeah, but, you know, also year by year, so people know, hey, this has been a long-term project. You know, this has been going on for a long time. And it's been over all these years, how much stuff we've done with it. Because you drive on them every day, you look at them, complain about them if you want. But one of our, if not our largest piece of infrastructure isn't, is roads. I mean, it's the most expensive to maintain, it's the most expensive we own. And Kevin and his department have done a great job with our pavement protection or preservation program, our PPP program. And I hope people know, we talk about it from time to time. But we have grading of all of our roads. I mean, they get graded every year to make, to know where we're gonna do the repairs, where we're gonna do it. It's not, it's definitely not arbitrary. You know, he has a master schedule of what's gonna happen and where we're gonna do it. And, you know, this is a great way for us to continue something that's already going. Because the most, you know, I know, I think all of you here the same as I do, one of the biggest complaints, suggestions we get is traffic, transportation, and roads. You know, and we're doing some of our own, but we couldn't do it, we couldn't do the ones that we're doing on our own without the help from the county tax that we get from them and the HERF funds. So it's just really important that we get the word out again, because this is a huge issue for people. And it's something that continues to get used every day and people, you take it for granted, but you don't realize how expensive it is to maintain that huge piece of infrastructure.
Absolutely. It's a vital asset. It's a, it's an essential need for, you know, the public. And it's, yes, it's very, very...
And safety, like you said.
Yes.
I, I just have one more comment that I have. And just out of curiosity, because I know if we're collecting 36.5 million dollars a year, the formula isn't exactly 13%, is it? Because if it was 13%, it should be like 4.7 million dollars that we get, not 2.9. So I'm sure there's some other administrative fees in there or something that...
Mayor, the 2.9 is what we've collected thus far this fiscal year.
Okay.
So that was only up until January, which is what we have revenue information from.
All right, well then I would suggest, let's compare apples to apples. So let's take a full year. Otherwise, it looks funny. It's funny math to me, because if I apply 13% to 36 million, it's 47, 4.7 million dollars, not 2.9.
That's, Mayor, that's very correct. Yeah, the city, in fiscal year 2223, which is where we have a full year of revenue, the city received 4.68 million.
There you go. That's the number you should be using, not 2.9, okay? So then that way, then we, then we put our map up that says, all right, here's where we spent all that money, right? And it's, and it shows everything that we've, we've used it on. And so that's where the connection has to come with our citizens. They have to understand that these roads don't fix themselves and that their tax dollars are actually being used to fix their roads. So I think every road project we do, we should have some big sign that says, hey, these are your tax dollars at work. I know we have them, we have some. And this, preserving our future, should be on every one of those projects with, you know, your money at work here. So I just, in terms of marketing, that's just kind of what I do. And so it's important, I think, to make sure that we are out there and in front of it.
Because we're on Thornton.
Yes, we have one. We, the county has them up on their transportation improvements and we're happy to provide that.
Well, and we, and we're using them too.
We've incorporated that. We're working with our PIO office and we're definitely putting those signs up more often.
Yeah, yeah, I think they should be everywhere, personally, so. Just, that's this guy's opinion, so. Anybody else have any questions or comments? I'm, sorry. Celeste, thank you. Thank you to the county.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, just elaborate just very quickly on the, on the question that Councilwoman Fitzgibbons raised related to our alignment. A couple of points that I wanna make sure that everyone is aware of is that while this is a county ballot initiative, there, we're, as a governmental partner, are going to be required to follow the same statutes in regards to elections, our abilities. And so it's gonna be very fact-based, and I know all of you are familiar with that. But Heather Kennedy is here this evening. She's here for a specific reason. She's well aware of, of the joint and aligned effort that we're, we've been having dialogue with the county and all the other municipalities. And some of it, Mr. Mayor, goes right back to your point about the signs. I know that we have requested two of the signs that the county has, has created to install related to this particular initiative. But we will be incorporating and certainly like the suggestions this evening about perhaps adding some dollar figures to the factual document that we will be putting out. But it will be very similar to other types of voter initiatives that we've dealt with in Casa Grande, where we will be giving presentations and the like. It is, I guess I would just stress, and I know that both Celeste and Kevin did a fantastic job in the presentation, this, this funding source is critical to the City of Casa Grande and quite frankly, every municipality and the county. And just to give the context, and I know this council is aware, the City of Casa Grande has, has really focused on larger projects. And you saw a few examples of that this evening. And, but without that, I can assure everyone in this community that the HERF revenues that we generate, which we, that are in question year after year, are not going to be sufficient. And a $4 million, $4.8 million hit to our road preservation efforts would be significant in this community. And we would see, our, the city would see it, our residents would see a decline in those numbers very rapidly. But at the end of the day, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we will, we will continue to work alongside the county on this initiative and will be hopeful that we see similar results to the reauthorization that had happened, that occurred 20 years ago.
Thank you, Larry. All right, no other comments or questions on this subject?
I had one more.
Go ahead, Matt.
On the website, Celeste, that you guys have? Is it possible, like, you know, if you go to the website, can you look up Casa Grande or Kearney? Or, you know, so each, people that look at it could look up their own municipality to see how that's affecting it?
We can add links to it, yeah. Right now, it's primarily news articles and information about the public information that's been put out. So we can direct people, if you guys have a source of a page too.
Like we could put our information and then you could just say, hey, if you wanna look at what is done for Casa Grande, this is it.
Absolutely, yeah. Certainly, we can do that.
That one page with all the projects and dollars attached to it.
Okay. We'll do that.
All right.
Thanks.
We can create the dollars in the page, but, okay. Thank you, Celeste. Thank you, Kevin. All right, let's move to item number two on our list, which is our City Campus Master Plan Project Update. Scott?
Mayor McFarland, members of the council, you'll recall from a previous study session presentation back in early December, we secured the services of a consultant to assist us with the City Hall Campus Master Plan Project. And you'll probably also recall that as kind of task one of that was taking the plans that we were able to find for a proposed remodeling of the Auditorium Building from 2003 and updating those figures as a start for us to understand what it would cost to try to put that facility back into service along the lines of what was determined to be appropriate, at least in 2003. And so we, we did that. Unfortunately, we were not able to find the spec book or the bid book that went with it. And so while the consultant and those working with the consultant were able to, to do a good job of getting numbers together, they had to represent their work to be a rough order of magnitude cost estimate. So it's, it's a little bit general, but I think it's close enough for, for our purposes as we move together and consider that. In addition, once we saw the initial report, it was our decision then to kind of put the consultant on hold. report, it was our decision then to, to kind of put the consultant on hold as we considered, as we prepared to bring this issue back to you. And we're hoping, based on our meeting this evening, that we can have a substantial, some, some significant guidance from Mayor and council as we move ahead in the process with the auditorium and the gymnasium building, which staff feels like their futures are inseparably linked. Stephen is going to bring up a video. I provided the Matrix Report to you at the last council meeting, so you had an opportunity to look through it carefully. We asked our PIO office to facilitate some, some video. There are pictures in the report, but there's nothing like putting, putting the live pictures there. So, this, this lingers a little bit on the, the roof, but we will be looking at the roof issue. Go ahead and start it, Stephen. We're going to be looking at the roof issue along the way. Then as we move into the building, we're going to be looking at the stage, then the east side ceiling, the east side floor, the lobby, and then finally the armadillo room, which was one of the, the three meeting rooms. When we first assumed ownership of this campus and that building, the individual, Manny Labus, who was in charge of the, the drama department and in charge of, kind of in charge of the building, gave me one piece of advice. He said, whatever you do, make sure that you get somebody up on the roof periodically to clean the roof drains out so that the water doesn't back up. I'm happy to report, based on these pictures, there isn't a lot of debris up there, in terms of extraneous debris and leaves and what have you. But as you can see, there's very large sections of the coating of the roof that are now missing in the, in the, the area. And also, the, the roof over the lobby area or the ticket booth area and the two adjacent spaces, you can see. This will take a little while to get through this, but I'll kind of talk over that. I had previously reported that the, the remodeling project that was put on the table in two thousand and three was put out to bid. And the low bid on that project was just under two point five million dollars for the work that needed to be done then, twenty years ago. So, Matrix took that particular set of plans and updated the costs estimates.
Scott, what, what was the extent of that work? Meaning, what was that to?
Was that just shoring it up?
Was that just doing the roof or what?
It was the entire project. The, the improvements that were anticipated, that included relocating, putting a new lobby on, splitting the, the, the main auditorium into two sections to make it more usable.
So, internal improvements too?
It was, it was HVAC, plumbing, electrical and those kinds of issues. And the minutes record that the two point four seven actually had omitted a couple of things, but the bidder at that time was willing to, to, to stand by his two point four seven million dollar bid. So, this area here is the, is what used to be called the Band and Coral Rooms, the meeting space, the, was headquarters for the Community Services Department. And the three meeting rooms dubbed the Armadillo Bobcat and Coyote Rooms, which were heavily used, all of that until the Community Recreation Center was built and Community Services Department itself was relocated. Again, some, some close-ups from a drone shot of the, the condition of the roof. And I, I think it was noted at the last, at the last meeting, there wasn't a, a majority of council to move ahead with this project in two thousand and three. And consequently, although there's been conversation over the years, really, nothing has been done in relationship to stabilization or any other kind of ongoing maintenance of the, of the building. And you'll see the, the results of that from an interior perspective. And again, the consultant has included some pictures in the, in the report, but the, the drone gives you a little better idea. And we're about to move into the, the building and just a brief picture of the stage, a little bit rough. There, there's some, a number of file boxes that have melted on the stage because of, because of water. Now, you're looking to the, looking south. So, the, on the left, there is the east side. And we'll be focusing in just a moment, the drone will be flying up. And looking at the, the ceiling conditions, obviously, the most leakage in the auditorium has been on the, on the east side. There we go. I've got it right. And we'll zoom out here just a minute and you'll see the damage done to the, to the floor, how much water has come in over the years as well. And there's different points in the ceiling as well. Picture of the floor on the east side. We're now in the lobby area or the, the booth area, which has, had, had a lot of, of water over the years. Remember judging or announcing a Christmas parade, electric light parade under the awning over there, and there was as much water flowing into the inside as there was, I think, to the outside. And you can see the results of that in, in, in the roof. Fortunately, the, the building has been secured and I don't think we've had a lot of issues with intruders. Again, we're still in the lobby area. Now, we're in the armadillo room, which has suffered the most damage in terms of roof leaks. And you can see from the, the ceiling tile situation how much that, how much leakage has taken place in the, in that room. The, the other two rooms are in fairly easy shape. So, so very graphic illustration of where we're at right now. The estimate, the rough order of magnitude cost estimate to do what was bid at two point four seven million dollars twenty years ago is at fourteen, thirteen point four three one million. That's the estimate. Again, not having the bid book, but the scope and the magnitude, the representation of the roof, mechanical systems and what have you, in totally need of repair. We have touched base on a couple of things. We were able to find a, an asbestos survey that was done. So, we, we have that, which might help us a little bit in relationship to doing the, the necessary Phase One. We've talked with our planning and development director about the issue of parking, if, if we would be needing to comply with the, with the parking rules, if we were able to put that back in to service. So, where there's been some other areas. But, but we didn't want to go anywhere without bringing this back to you all to get your perspective on this issue. It's very, very difficult to, to do the rest of the camp, or any of the campus planning unless we kind of understand what your feelings are about the future of these two buildings. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll ask Larry if he has anything to add and then we can answer questions.
No, Scott, thank you. Nothing, nothing really more to add at this point. I, I think you did a nice job on the overview. Anyone have questions for Scott? Go ahead, Bob.
Scott, was there, was there any kind of budget figure or estimate figure assigned to any upgrades or improvements? Because I know typically, these older buildings have very poor restroom facilities. And it, and it, it seems to me like if we were going to remodel it to be used, that there, there would be some things that we want to not just refurbish or replace, but we would want to expand them. Has that been given any thought at all?
Mayor McFarlane, Councilmember Huddleston, yes. In fact, the design plans from two thousand and three built essentially a new lobby area facing this direction and significant new restroom facilities. So, the ADA requirements from two thousand and three were fairly significant and, and accessibility and all of the things that were needed to, to make this, to make the auditorium usable. And again, to carry forward the council at that time's direction to separate, to be able to accommodate, separate half of the auditorium at any time. So, the answer to your question is, yes, these were not just, just to get it back open. These were requirements, these were things that were necessary twenty years ago. I, I, you know, they, they may or may not have looked extremely carefully at things that have been upgraded rule-wise since then. But I think it's, it's good to say that this, this included all of those kinds of things that you're probably thinking about.
Okay. Scott, if we, if we did the thirteen point four three million dollar improvements and we use this, do we even have enough parking?
We didn't get down to the actual yea or nay.
Because there's not a lot of parking there.
We would have to use the vacant space that we have on Eighth Street to even begin to speak to it. Larry, am I representing that correctly?
That's absolutely correct.
Matt, go ahead.
We have put out over the last few years, some RFPs and RFQs, I believe, to, to try to stimulate or get ideas from people who would want to partner or transform this into something maybe not an auditorium, maybe, you know, whatever, we were looking for any ideas. And my understanding is we got very little interest or response back from that. Is that?
Mr. Mayor, Council, Councilmember Herman, they, you're right on all fronts. I, I believe we, I know that we've put out a request for information, at least on two occasions, maybe three, and, and went through the process to determine if there would be any type of interest on the part of a developer, a property manager, something of that nature. And ultimately, never had what I would consider to be a submittal that would be worth pursuing. There, there were always individuals that were looking for the space, but I don't know that they would have had the wherewithal or the financial capability of making the improvements and/or, or being a person, an organization that we could do a complete redevelopment with.
And I know, not to jump the gun, but I've talked, I've heard, and you've given us reports on the, exploring the other auditoriums in town.
Right.
Do we have a, a survey or like a usage chart of those? Have that been put together? Like, how much they're actually used and what their vacancy is and what their, you know, so how many people could use it more?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Herman, we do not have an actual matrix of use. We do know that we've got a couple of different venues in the community, primarily that are owned by the, the school districts. They've got, they've got, we've, we've obviously converted our, our women's club to a bit of a, a bit of a, of a venue. And so, we have data from, from, from those particular groups and organizations. I will say that if, my understanding is that the, that the Penn Center out at CAC is, is a venue that's regularly used because of the size and the, and the amenities. Unfortunately, they've had some issues with their, with their facility as well. So, you know, there is, I, I guess I would spend just a second, I was going to save this to the end, but just to brief the council on the dialogue that we've most recently been having with the elementary school district. And, and I know the council's where we, we brought this up during the last study session, that there's been some discussions with the elementary school district about a potential partnering for a shared use of the Frank, Dr. Frank Davidson Auditorium. That, that dialogue, we've had, we've had follow-up meetings. I, the meetings have been very productive. We are looking to take what I consider to be the next step in that can, in that dialogue by commissioning a feasibility study that really talks about the programming that might happen there, about the potential costs. It really becomes the framework for any type of a future intergovernmental agreement between the two entities as an option for, for us to have a performing arts venue that is, that is better suited, better equipped for both large and smaller productions. I, I, I would also add at this point in time, because I know the mayor and council is aware of the fact that there have been a group of former elected officials that have been very interested, some of those on the council at the time that Scott outlined in two thousand and three, when the decision was made on this particular auditorium that is in our ownership. And, and we have, we have met with them on a couple of occasions as well. And we have briefed them on much of the same information that the mayor and council has learned tonight. We wanted to make them aware of the, of, essentially, the, the realities of the existing space and the cost to renovate. And I think that all of them are, they want something to be done with the space that can be useful. I, I think that their opinions vary on what that might look like. Back to the RFI, there's always been a, a thought that perhaps there, there could be a public-private partnership of sort. There's others that believe that government space, that this is a government campus that ought to be focused to that. That, that is essentially what led us down this path on this, on this City Hall Master Plan, is to, is to continue to do some visioning. But, but in essence, as Scott has pointed out, the key, the key element is whether or not that space needs to be preserved for an auditorium, or whether or not we ought to be looking at other, better suited options for that particular location and space.
And I'm pretty sure we've looked into grants for that. I mean, because is it, is it necessarily historical or not?
No. We, it, it is my understanding that we have not considered this, this, this particular facility has not been designated as a historic venue. We have, we have never looked at attempting to get it qualified as a historic venue. And so, the specific historic grants would not be, we would not be eligible for those. There, there could be some performing arts types of, of funding that, that would be available. I, I think you could essentially apply those types of funds to any venue that you, a location that you selected.
And last time we talked about it, I mentioned that most communities that have theaters of this magnitude have a name connected to them as in a financial backer.
Yes.
And the other thing is, the audiovisual stuff, I don't know if that's included, because I know that can get very expensive. These, you know, computer controls and lights and sound and, I mean, I don't know if that's.
Councilmember Herman, I, I have the plans.
I mean, just something to think about, you know, I mean.
And I don't remember seeing the specificity in the, in the bid, in the documented report.
I haven't, didn't see it in there. So, but, and then lastly, I have to say every time that my mom reminds me, there's a time capsule in the corner of that building from her high school class. So.
We'll take, we'll take it.
Don't forget about the time capsule.
And Larry, and if I can, if I can add a little more color to this conversation, the, the Frank Davidson Auditorium has, is in good shape. It, they've, they've kept it up. It has new HVAC, it's got a new roof. It's, it's in really good shape. It just needs an upgrade. And I, and it only gets used, they use that auditorium maybe four or five times a year. That's it. So, I think if we can enter into some agreement with them, and maybe I'm traveling where I shouldn't, Brett, okay, I'm okay, all right, that I, I think that we could help manage that facility with them and make it an entertainment and public, you know, auditorium, you know, program. And then that would actually, and there's a lot of parking there. They have a lot of parking. So, the parking is not a problem. You know, and then rehabbing it and new, new audiovisual in there as well. I mean, so there's a whole new, new bathrooms, because it, it has two bathroom stalls for nine hundred people. So, it's, it's outdated. But, so the same problem we have, they have. But, but their bones are better.
Yeah.
And so, I think that, you know, this space needs to be used. We have to figure out what that use is going to be. You know, there's a lot of ideas, a lot of vision out there on what it might be. I think, you know, it's good space, you know, can we preserve a wall or two? Yeah, I think that would be kind of cool to incorporate it into the architecture of the building, you know, and preserve some of the history. And then sell all the other bricks.
I would say, well, we don't want to put all that money into that.
No.
You know what I'm saying? So, I don't know what you're saying.
Yeah, I'd rather put six million in there, that one, and have a state-of-the-art facility than put thirteen million in this one, just to have a shell.
And it's a shame. I, I really love that facility. I believe in nineteen ninety-three, All-in-One Community Choir, which I was president of, we sung in there. And so, and didn't look at the pictures.
Lot different.
Sad. Yeah, 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 yeah. That we let that go to waste like that over these years and we just sit on it, you know? And now, it's costing us more money from two thousand and three. I think you had, what, two point seven?
Yeah.
Now, we're at fourteen, thirteen-five. It's unfortunate. And, and to put a lot of money into that to get it back where it needs to be, I think, we should not do that. We should not do that.
Bob, Bob, sorry.
Donna Spindler.
Oh, Donna, go ahead.
That's okay. Just a couple of comments. And I agree with Anthony. You know, you hear about how it has. You know, you hear about how it has, it has become what it is. And we can do the woulda, coulda, shoulda, but the fact is that it's very sad to see those pictures. And not to place blame anywhere, but, you know, shame on all of us, you know, as a community. But I think that when you're looking at the 13.5 million, I think that it is a lot. And I know that there have been talked about grants, and it's something that was not available at the time, even back as 2003. So I know that, you know, everybody talks about, there's all kinds of grants that you can get, but in actuality, we should have done that in 2003, if that was the case, and it wasn't. Parking is an issue, and I'm just wondering, not that it really at this point matters, but in the 13.5 million, what, did that include like bringing it up to fire code and all those kinds, not just, and I agreed with Matt, because I was looking at technology, but just the basics?
Mayor McFarlane, Councilmember McBride, if you look at the report, they make a couple of general statements, our consultant, that significant core and shell improvements to address several generations of updates to the building codes, structural, life safety, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems, changes to building standards, technology and operations over the past 20 years, these would mostly occur in the use of energy, mechanical systems, security, operations, and sustainability. So it includes all of those, all of those things, so...
Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't.
But whatever's changed from the standards in 2003, plus whatever the council that decided to look at this and redesign it, or do a community design or whatever, those things are not a part of this. It simply took these plans from 20 years ago and updated them.
Right. And I think that that's something that we have to look at, because we have to be good representatives, because we have, you know, we have people that want to do things to older buildings here in town. And when they look at those, you know, the first thing that happens is that we have our fire department go out and they look and make sure they're within code. We have to do that as well. And I think that if we got down to the nitty-gritty, I think it would be a lot more than 13 million after looking at that.
And that was going to be my point, too, that with our collective experience, I think we know that 13, 14 million is going to be 20 million. And I agree with the mayor that Frank Davidson Auditorium is a much better foundational start for this idea. But I also think the group of former city leaders that is pushing to keep it, I think they're going to have something to say about this.
Well, I think Larry had a good conversation with him. Larry, maybe you can kind of, you know, explain, because I think you mentioned the Frank Davidson Auditorium and some of the work we're doing with the elementary school. And they seemed that they were willing to capitulate and to, you know, work with us in terms of what potentially it could become, you know, in terms of our campus, our total campus here. So I think you have to look, we need to look at this as a total campus, right? Not just that building, or not just the auditorium. We've got to look at the whole...
We previously kind of tossed that around, and I love the idea of having Fire Station One right out there on Florence Boulevard.
That's one of the visions.
One of the visions. But I think we need to pick a stance on how we're going to be able to discuss it with these former leaders.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
And my suggestion, I don't even know if this is possible, but we present their option back to them as a bond issue, where they would have to sell it to the citizens. Because I don't believe your average citizen out there wants to invest a lot of money in that auditorium.
Yeah, great.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, just let me add some of the context, because I think it's important to the point that was just raised by Councilmember Huddleston. The overall, the lion's share of the passion of this particular group is to achieve some type of a performing art venue that we can be proud of in Casa Grande. And they all were very pleased to learn that we were pursuing the dialogue with the elementary school district. Because of the knowledge of a few of them in regards to performing arts, they had what I would consider to be a few elements that they told us to take extra caution on. And certainly, we could, if the idea is to renovate this particular auditorium, we could certainly take a bond question of that nature. My sense is, is that the group, we would likely want to incorporate their input as part of the visioning, but they just want something done. I think at this point, they want to see something done with the building. And that could be, that can include being razed and with another facility being added in its place. But at the end of the day, I think that it is more about do something with it now, do something.
And both buildings, both, the gym as well.
We have, they have not had the type of dialogue on the gymnazian component, because their focus has been performing arts. I think it's more of a staff's perspective that as we start to do more of a master planning concept, that that space will likely be needed for other types of growth within the community and/or the organization.
So Larry, what do you want from council?
Well, from Council, Mayor, we were really looking for a direction as to whether or not you wanted us to continue to proceed with preserving that particular facility, right, Scott? I mean, if that was the direction that we were going to go, then we would ultimately begin to focus on the engineering design of that being the performing arts facility. If that is not the direction that you would prefer the staff go and that we begin to look at other alternatives, then we'll start down that master planning concepts to bring visions back to the mayor and council to evaluate.
Yeah, just my thoughts are that I think it would behoove us to look at our entire campus, look at the future needs of the city, whether it's a Fire Station 501, or whether it's new office complexes, whether it's a new council chamber. You know, not that this isn't functional, but as we grow, the council chamber needs to grow, and this could be used for office space or something. I'm just talking, you know, off the cuff here. And so, but I'd love to see, you know, a vision and a plan that, you know, brings some ideas, have, get somebody involved, get a, you know, an engineering group like Wilson or somebody, and have them, you know, give them what we need, right, what we're looking for, and then have them come back with some ideas, kind of like what we're doing with the auditorium.
Yes.
But for the camp, for this campus.
We're engaged with the Matrix Group for that specific engagement now, Mayor.
Okay. Lisa had something she wanted to say.
Well, no, and I appreciate the visual. I think that was very helpful. I haven't been inside, so I had no idea, and like you brought back a lot of memories. But of course, at the beginning, you know, I always thought, oh, it would be great to preserve it, but not at this price tag. I mean, I think, you know, like you said, Mayor, it's time to kind of move forward, see how we're going to, you know, move into the future and what the needs are. I would like to see, you know, the community involved a little bit, not just this group of people that have been vocal, but there's, you know, a large community that can give input and not just settle for sure on the fire station, that is one option, but see what the other needs are. So I really do appreciate this visual, but I would have a really hard time moving forward with that. And it's going to be, it is going to be way more, like you said, Donna, way more than that price tag.
Have a quick.
So thank you for the visual.
Matt, one more comment.
Also, to Larry's point is, if we partnered with the school district, we'd see results a lot sooner than if we did a full, complete 20 million dollar redevelopment.
Absolutely, yeah.
And we're always talking about partnerships. And this is a perfect opportunity for us to have that partnership with the school district and improve what they already have.
Right. Yeah, and the challenge that the schools have is that they don't, they don't go out and they don't promote and they don't, like, solicit, right, people to use their facilities because it's their facilities. And they have to keep the kids safe, and, you know, there's a lot of other considerations. But with this particular one, it's not inside the campus, it's outside the campus. It's actually in a perfect spot that we could actually help them operate it. And maybe there's, you know, concerts that are put on there, maybe there's fundraisers that are done there. You know, if it has new concessions, it has a new lobby, it has new bathrooms, state-of-the-art audiovisual. So there's a whole lot of positives that can be done there. And then I think Larry, just getting somebody to give us, you know, maybe take some public input, you know, what does the public think the city campus should offer? I mean, is it a better planning department facility so that there's planning space for them and to interact with our business partners? Is it a better finance department, you know, is it a better HR area? You know, there's a lot of opportunities, I think, to, I think, take this space and upgrade it. I mean, this is historic, right? This is a historic building, this is not going anywhere. But certainly, we could redo the space inside of it. We did that once already. And so, you know, there's, I think, opportunities to reuse this public space here and maybe build some new public space that might even architecturally be similar to this building, right, so that it all kind of ties together as a community campus, right? It's a city campus. Yeah, so did you need any more direction on the auditorium? I think your general consensus is that we don't want to spend 13.5 or 20 million dollars.
We will continue the dialogue with the elementary school district on the auditorium performing art segment of the discussion. We will move forward with starting more of the master planning concept with that space being an available location on this site.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Got nods, heads nodding, yes.
Perfect.
Okay, all right. Any other comments or questions from the council? Anybody? All right. We'll stand adjourned until 7:05, 7:06. We've got about five minutes, and then we'll reconvene the normal...